Good evening. The eighth meeting of the governing body. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening Pastor Emmett Brown will be giving the invocation. Pastor Emmett Brown is honored to offer prayer today. He's a retired United States Air Force veteran and a former employee of the United States Post Office. He serves as the pastor of the Church of the Living God here in Topeka. It's a blessing to continue both serving my community and my faith. Church of the Living God is located at 2816 Southeast Jefferson Street. It's a little bitty church with a big heart and lots of spirit. So I'd like to welcome him and also thank him for serving not only his community but serving the United States. Pastor Brown.
Amen. We want to first acknowledge and honor our mayor.
Pastor, if you could pull that microphone just a bit closer to you.
There you go.
So we can hear you. We don't want to miss your big words.
All right. I'll get in it.
There you go.
Amen. We want to honor our mayor here today and all of you that's on the platform and all those as are present. We are small in numbers but great in mission.
That's right.
And in saying that, we're going to go ahead and pray. Let us pray. Father God, we just, first of all, thank you for allowing us to assemble today. We love you, Lord, and we invite you into this session, these great people that you have appointed over us, God. And we ask you, Lord, that you would give us the wisdom today, dear Lord, that we may accomplish what we came to do. So many times, God, they have come together and they've worked together. And, Lord, we ask today, God, that they would accomplish what they came to do, Lord. And we love you, God. And, God, we ask that they would represent the district, their respective district, God, and that this great council right here, God, would be a council that the others will look at and want to emulate. Lord, we just thank you today and we worship you. It's in the name of Jesus Christ that we ask it all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
All right. Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmember Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay, all present. And what we have next is a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month. If I could have Amber Miller join me up here? It's my honor and privilege to be able to make this proclamation today. Proclamation by the mayor. Whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of the city of Topeka, and whereas positive childhood experiences such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, and whereas strengthening families through access to concrete economic, social, and community-based supports reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect and ensures children have the foundation for a lifelong well-being, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Topeka and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families and witness whereof I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to hereby affix my official signature and official seal for the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this eighth day of April 2025. Amber, thank you for all the work that you do at Children's Service League. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much. I'd like to start off and just say thank you to the city council for recognizing the importance of child abuse prevention. Kansas Children's Service League, we are the Kansas chapter of Prevent Child Abuse America. Our programs focus in the area of serving children and families in the health, safety, and education, where we break the cycles of abuse, neglect, and trauma. We, as a community as a whole, have a collective responsibility for, to make sure that our children grow up healthy, happy, and safe and free from all types of abuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. We also have, well, I think this has been taken off the civil service recognition. Okay. There was, I think here, an opportunity, I believe, for Councilman Miller to address the body with regards to your work over there in installing the, getting that crosslight installed over in your district. I saw it initially on an agenda, but I don't see it here yet. Last week. We'll talk about it again. He can brag, brag, brag.
Listen.
That was a good thing, child prevention, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, but that wasn't the work of me. That was the work of a lot of people over a lot of years advocating for
We had part of it.
...a safe route, safer route across a very busy street and a very busy intersection. So I appreciate you saying that, but the kudos goes to all the teams and the kids and the families who advocated for years.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that's significant though, because we've talked about those kinds of things over and over, and oftentimes it's the council person in that district that initiates it and gets those things done. So my thanks to you for getting that done. We'll move on now to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay. We have a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Ronald Mullins to the City of Topeka Board of Electrical Appeals for a term ending April 11, 2027. And then we have a committee appointment recommending the appointment of Brett Martin to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee for a term ending April 8, 2027.
Okay. You've heard the appointments as read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, I see Brett in the audience and I'd ask him to stand and also we'll recognize Mr. Mullins for taking on this duty and responsibility with the city. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to Agenda Item Four, Presentations. Madam Clerk?
First presentation is the Complete Streets Presentation.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Kopley, Deputy City Manager, will lead us to this item. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you for the opportunity. So Dan and I will be tag teaming on this. I was asked to provide a introduction to Complete Streets. It has been a while. The starting point was back in 2009 when the governing body passed a resolution adopting this concept of complete streets. And basically what it comes down to is we want to provide convenient connections and access to all transportation users, including transit, pedestrian, bicycle, and motorists and freight. And we want to accommodate all ages and abilities. Now, this policy document was fleshed out in 2019 when we engaged a consultant, which was Tool, which is a, both a planning and engineering firm, to assist us to come up with some complete street guidelines. And those were adopted by the MTPO, which is composed of members of this body, the county, and KDOT in 2019. And the design guidelines are predicated on just the basic principle that we want to promote safe access for all users and accommodate all ages and abilities. Now specifically, the guidelines provide with guidance in terms of being able to work with our design consultants and our engineering staff to be able to provide for accommodation for accessibility and as well as sidewalks, bike lanes, and other complete street principles. And these allow us to incorporate some of our emerging best practices and provide some flexibility to respond to unique circumstances. So again, what we want to do is support livable places and neighborhoods and provide safety, comfort, and health for all users and be economically and environmentally sustainable. When you talk to traffic engineers, we, they typically talk about roads being in three different functional classifications: arterial, collector, and residential. Well, Tool did a deeper dive in here and basically came up with 11 different types of street typology, and these are based on land use and character. And so they really laser focused in, in terms of providing guidance, in terms of what kind of elements would be incorporated in each of these, of each of these street types. An example would be, a mixed-use boulevard would be Washburn and Lane between 14th and 17th over by the College Hill Development. A main street would be, an example of that would be Kansas Avenue between 4th and 10th. Neighborhood residential would be Greenwood or Woodlawn in Potlin. And an industrial street would be Wanger. And again, the beauty about this street typology is they really take a strong look at the underlying use and character of those neighborhoods in terms of what elements to include. So one of the principles is sidewalk design. So really sidewalks have three major components to them. So the first is what we call the frontage zones, that's right up against the building. Example, that would be on Kansas Avenue where why would you have a bike lane and a shared use lane or a sidewalk? And the, really what we, we look at are a number of factors in terms of deciding what are the appropriate bike facilities. One of those is the speeds. Another one is the traffic volume, right? And then there are some times where we want to have more than one avenue for pedestrians and bicyclists because, again, the, the underlying premise is we want to be able to provide a safe environment for all, all people using that corridor. Now, you might have someone who is a expert bicyclist and very avid and can ride 20 miles an hour and feels very comfortable out being in, in the street in a traffic lane. And then you may have someone with three and four-year-old children that are on tricycle that are not comfortable being anywhere near a shared use lane or a bike lane. They really want to be on a sidewalk or a shared use path. So, let me go back one. All right. So let's talk about traffic calming. So basically, the, the reason that we really focus on traffic calming as part of Complete Streets is because of vulnerable road users. And vulnerable road users are pedestrians and bicyclists. So the statistics that are out there basically say that if a pedestrian or bicyclist is in an accident with an automobile traveling 20 miles an hour, there's an 18% chance that that person will suffer a fatality or a serious bodily injury. Once you increase that vehicle speed up to 30 miles an hour, a pedestrian or bicyclist that gets, that impacts a car moving 30 miles an hour, there's a 50% likelihood of fatality or serious injury. That amps up to 77% chance of fatality or serious injury if the vehicle is traveling 40 miles an hour. And so we have a number of, I'll call them tools in the toolbox that help us to traffic calm or to be able to slow vehicles down. So vertical treatments, speed cushions, speed humps, and raised sidewalks are one example. Where we have successfully used a raised crosswalk or intersection is North Kansas and Gordon. So there we, we're having some issues in terms of narrow misses, and so we went with four-way stop sign, but we also went with that raised table across there, which has done a very good job of, of helping to calm traffic. We also installed one on 12th Street right by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So horizontal treatments are a little bit different because there we want to slow speed by forcing deflection or by narrowing lanes. And so examples of these would be a chicane, curb extensions, a neck down, as well as putting in a smaller traffic circle in an intersection in a neighborhood. So intersection design, really what this is showing is the benefit of a curb extension, right? So a curb extension does a number of things to provide for a safer environment. First is that it shortens the crossing distance so that the pedestrian does not have to cross as much of the road. It also gets the pedestrian out so that they are visible to, to vehicles. And so what we overall do is we have a traffic calming effect as well as we increase the overall safety. So our implementation priorities include always safety first, designing for vulnerable road users, providing for network connectivity, being very sensitive to the context. Again, that goes back to the multiple different street typologies that we have in the design guidelines, and then using data-driven decisions such as crash, crash data, traffic counts. Example of that is on our Huntune project. We did a study to determine what the traffic volume was during that AMP, and then we did an analysis of the traffic volume versus the capacity to be able to make that decision that one lane was sufficient. We also, as part of our design on that, we took a hard look at the crash history, and as you remember, we had over 300 crashes in that five-year period. We had speed data showing that more than 36% of the drivers did not follow the posted speed limits, and we found that by reducing from two lanes down to one lane, we reduced the number of conflict points by 24%, overall making for a safer corridor.
So the city updated the downtown master plan a few years ago, and each of the district plans contains Complete Streets recommendations. So the example here is from the Capitol District. It identified 8th Avenue as a 60s Boulevard, which meant it should accommodate pedestrian, bike, bus, and car. And so the image on the right there is just, just outside the Capitol, north of the Capitol, with a completed project there. So you can see the lane for the car, the bicycle, the bus. So that was implemented. The district plan, district plan also mentioned converting Jackson and Harrison from one-way to two-way traffic and provides some guidance on how to do that through the, you know, how you organize the lanes and the parking, et cetera. One note to make about downtown street projects is they're basically on hold currently. Once Polk Quincy is done, the city needs to evaluate the traffic post Polk Quincy to decide which streets need to be adjusted or changed in the future. And that's it.
With that, we will gladly stand for any, any questions that you might have on Complete Streets.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. This reminded me, Braxton, I think it was a couple of years ago, when you came into the Oakland NIA and had a meeting because there was such an uproar with needing traffic calming, and we did a vote, you know, hand vote and presentation on options. And I know at the time, there had not been any funding for it, but this reminds me that we need to meet and revisit this because the traffic, the speed, the uncontrolled intersections, specifically in Oakland, which is such a tightly boxed-in community where there's a lot of people that walk, crossing the street, a lot of kids on bikes, and a lot of fast traffic by people that don't seem to care to follow the, the traffic requirements. I think it would be good for you and I in Oakland to revisit this. So thank you.
Always happy to engage in those conversations.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Have we done away with speed bumps altogether?
So speed bumps is not a tool that we use because in our climactic zone, we need to plow streets. So they're really like a speed table, for example, or a raised intersection. Those are situational where, where necessary. For example, I think there was a recommendation for one in Oakland in the study that we did. And again, I gave you a couple of examples of 12th at Huntune, I'm sorry, 12th Street by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and then the North Kansas and Gordon.
So have we replaced it with traffic calming measures, with traffic calming?
Certainly, we can look at traffic calming measures, whether it's vertical or horizontal, where, where necessary.
So...
And where warranted.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I have a speed bump that's been flattened and flattened over there on Buchanan. Do you know where I'm at? 23rd and Buchanan, right in that area?
No, ma'am, I'm not, not aware of it, but we can certainly take, take a look at it.
I don't want you to take it out. I just, I just, I'm just asking, that's why I'm asking, because I know Clinton Heights Steel, they, they would like more speed bumps with all the traffic flying through there, especially...
Again, we, we are really not in favor of those because it is very difficult to, to plow a street when you have speed bumps on there. I would prefer to use other, say, horizontal or other traffic calming measures to achieve that.
Is it a traffic calming measure when the street makes you go like that on Buchanan? Is that, is that a traffic calming? I mean, because if you're going too fast, you're, you're, you're going to tear up your car. People that are not from the Clinton Heights Steel area, if they don't know what they're doing, they're going to bottom out. And it doesn't look like it. What's that called when you're... You want to go on a ride, Braxton? You want me to come and get you? We'll go on a ride?
I'm happy to. I assume that you're talking about...
Get a, get a city vehicle and I'll take you over there. We'll go on a ride.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you, by chance, speak to the increased amount of cities that are getting people to ride bicycles? There is a bicycling boom within the country as different prices get out of hand for us to travel. I know for a fact my family is looking to ride our bikes more this summer as the weather gets right. So could you speak to how important it is for safe streets for the people who don't bike very often and don't do those types of things to know how big the population is of someone or the people who would like to use our roads in that manner? Thank you.
So again, the, the underlying premise with the council adopting the ordinance back in 2009 was to make the streets safe and usable for all users regardless of age or ability, including bicyclists and pedestrians. So the, the governing body, starting back in 2009, adopted that policy, and then in 2019, we adopted the design guidelines or the MTPO adopted the design guidelines. So yes, it, it absolutely is important, and it's something that KDOT, for example, and most of the other state DOTs are putting a lot of emphasis on what they call VRUs or the vulnerable road users. And again, it goes back to the statistics that I cited in terms of the likelihood of fatality or serious injury based on a collision of a bicyclist or pedestrian with a vehicle. Thank you very much.
Councilman Duncan?
Can you talk about, do we put, once we design, like, we'll just, I guess, use the downtown, the town has the green lane for the bikes and the red lane for the buses. Over time, do we build those into some sort of automatic maintenance plan for any of these bike lanes, or is it just when we do reviews every once in a while, we decide? And the reason I ask is I know we've got some bike lanes that are starting to age just in terms of how long we put them in, and so those lines start to get very faded. So does it take someone reporting that? Does it take us just going out and seeing it? Or do we create some sort of regular maintenance plan for those once we, if we're going to keep adding all these bike lanes to make sure those lanes stay visible over time?
So they're part of our pavement markings, which include crosswalks as well as all of our long lines. And so, yes, we do have, as part of our street trans ops, is to do an inspection of those to make sure that they, we keep up with them, right? To keep those pavement markings fresh so that they're visible.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Sorry, real quick, kind of going off of what she was talking about just a second ago. The... I apologize. Councilwoman Ortiz, ma'am, I apologize. Those speed cushions, I can see why that's difficult when we're trying to plow, but is it really that much of a, a problem on the speed humps? Because it's just a raised elevation, since it doesn't have the cracks in between, are those really an issue when it comes to plowing the streets as much as the crosswalks?
So again, where, where appropriate, we have built the sort of, the speed table that is not as difficult to navigate if you're operating a, a plow, right? Because that is a slope going up, and then you've got the table, and then you've got the slope going down. Example would be the intersection of Kansas and Gordon, right? But there, again, the, the vertical treatments are not preferred because it's not just the snowplow, but it's also water ponding that when you have freezing temperatures create ice. So that's where the vertical applications in terms of, of using the vertical, I'm sorry, horizontal applications as opposed to vertical to accomplish the traffic calming.
Could you speak to, in general, which one's more expensive to do, the horizontal or vertical?
If you're going to, they're, they're, they both have a cost, and cost is one of the things that we, that we would look at. we would look at. To do a raised table intersection is a significant cost, right? As part of the Safe Streets for All grant, that would allow for demonstration projects. So that would allow us to use like channelizers to create like a chicane, or to create bullbouts using channelizers, be low cost, to see if that's accomplishing what we want. And then we could apply for implementation grants in the subsequent funding or grant application cycle.
Thank you. Councilman Dobler.
Just a comment. I don't, excuse me, I don't know if anybody else saw this, but we have a presentation on complete streets followed by a pothole report. I'm assuming potholes are not considered traffic calming. Is that correct?
Not intentionally.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other observations or questions? Okay, I think that is a good one to end on. Thank you, both gentlemen. Okay, next we have a presentation on pothole program report. Madam Chair, yeah, I just read your introduction.
No worries. We'll do it again, just in case. Second presentation, we have the pothole program report from Steve.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Gronn, our Director of Public Works, will lead us to this item.
Good evening, Mayor, governing body. Yes, these can be traffic calming when you get a lot of them, but we do not prefer to use that method to calm traffic. A couple months ago, we were asked to put together a quick report on potholes and how the street department gets out there and battles the issues we have, mostly in the wintertime and spring, but we do get potholes year-round. The street department, we have quite a bit of roads that we maintain. We have about 1,600 lane miles of streets, another just over 1,000 miles of alleys, of which about half of those are paved. We also own and maintain 101 bridges. And to take care of all that infrastructure, we have 51 employees in the street department, of which 38 are maintenance workers in the streets department that do everything from plowing to grading to pothole patching and everything else we have them do. For pothole patching, we have two patch trucks, and we have four hot box trailers. In the winter, we're also able just to use some pickups and other dump bodies to throw cold mix in there. And we can have upwards of seven crews out there fighting potholes in the winter. In the summer, depending on the number of work orders and potholes we have, we can vary anywhere from four crews to six crews. So what causes a pothole? Well, it's part of our climate area here. Typically, the most common reason is the freeze thaw cycle. You get water over time, working through cracks in the pavement. It gets down into your some grade, and in the freezing temperatures, after you had a nice warm day, and the water gets down there, it freezes. And as you know, when you have freezing water, it expands. Eventually, you end up with a cavity under the road that creates a void, and then traffic can push that void down, creating the pothole. There's other causes also, you know, concrete roads that are old and haven't been maintained, or you have some expansion issues. You could have poor concrete that was made with a softer aggregate instead of a stronger aggregate that just over time can fail. But quite often, it's the infiltration of water into your roadway system, and that's something we try really hard to prevent every year. Most of our pavement management is funded by the citywide half sales tax, which raises about $19 million a year. Of that, we spend just over $11 million on our pavement management program, which will include our rehabilitation and reconstruction of existing streets, also our mill and overlay program, and some full-depth patching. We also spend about $4 million a year on our contracted preventive maintenance projects, and that would be your micro-servicing projects, our ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface projects, and our crack sealing. And for the last 10 years now, they've been contracting out with a consultant every three years to drive every road in Topeka and do analysis of the roadways. And we'll be doing it again later this year. But the last three times that they've studied this now, the PCI score, which is the measurement of the ride quality and the quality of our roads, has consistently gone up. And we're looking forward to seeing what the data shows this year. We're anticipating that the score will go up again. And that is an indication that our streets are getting better as the city and the governing body has made the investment in using this half-cent citywide sales tax dollar to really be proactive in the maintenance of our roadways. Here's a picture of our winter operations with the cold mix. Cold mix is just, a lot of times, you get it in the bag or get it patched, but there's no binder to it. You're not able to compact it properly. You're not using tack oil. So it truly is a temporary fix. A lot of people get upset in the wintertime because they'll call and say, "We turned this pothole in yesterday, and you haven't fixed it." Well, there's a chance we might have fixed it twice. Because in the wintertime, it's really hard to make a repair. They're just temporary repairs, and depending on the traffic, they could last between an hour and a week. You just never know. But our crews go out there and do the best they can in the circumstances. And every spring, we're really grateful when the asphalt plants open up so we can get out there and start making more of a difference. In the summertime, once we get hot mix, we can use the tack oils, which helps adhere it. We can use our rollers and plate tamperers to compact it. We can square the holes up. You just get a much better product. And typically, these will last a lot better than the cold mix patches. We do track our pothole complaints. See Click Fix has been a great asset. We're able to insert work orders. But we can put this on what we call a hot heat map, shows where the worst areas we have in town. And the yellow colors, which is, a lot of it is on Topeka Boulevard at 29th, 37th, and down by Frida Lay, and also up on North Topeka Boulevard, north of Soldier Creek. There's some areas on 17th, and then also Wanamaker. There's been Huntune. It scatters around, but we do get the more complaints on the busier roads. That's why you'll see them concentrated on those roads. And it's one of the tools we can use to help, there we go, that we can use to help develop our pavement management program also. For some graphics, these are a couple things we use. You can go off a service request received, which I like to use. We have some year-to-date statistics in our annual statistics for 21 through 24. Excuse me. This pothole field numbers pretty high this year. And I think you're not quite as accurate on the number of potholes because it depends on the crews. Some people do it based on a shovel full, some are going on the potholes. But as we, one of the things we'll be doing this year is getting our new ABL system with a little more, able to track the vehicles. And we're hoping they can use that to input what they're doing into our work orders so we can get a little more accurate numbers. There's a graph showing where we are year-to-date compared to last year. And finally, for citizens that do see potholes and would like to turn them in, the most efficient way to turn them into the street department is to use the See Click Fix on topeka.org. And when you do that, it goes right to the proper people to get a work order authorized. And those go right out to the crews so we can get crews out there and go after these potholes and try to make them go away. So happy to stand for any questions.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Stephen. Team, I am curious, the statistics you just put up there, you have them going back to 2021. Do you have a thought, and I know Braxton's still in the room, of when we kind of started tracking those? Because I'd like to see extended out, because we as citizens have been talking about potholes for a long time. Seeing those numbers in the past four years is very interesting, but I wonder if you're going to extrapolate that out?
I can see what we can come up with, but there weren't, the data was the old software system, I believe, before 2021. And our data isn't quite as accurate, but I can see what we can pull up and get it to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for the information you gave me tonight. In my district, 37th Street's coming up every day. Even today, I had a constituent wanting to know, when are we going to do something? I know that we've talked about this at least a couple of times. And I'm wondering if hearing it from you, the constituents in District Four, will have a better understanding of when we're going to have that project on 37th Street begin, and maybe give them some confidence that I'm getting the message to you.
Yeah, we get quite a few complaints also on there. We get probably some of the same emails that you and Deputy Mayor receive. And we actually were out there on Monday to see if we could do a little bit more proactive with the mill to clean some of those areas up. But there is a segment of that road, our program, that over the next three years for improvements. I believe next year, it's Indiana to California. That's scheduled for an overlay. So we are going after it. It just takes a while. We have a lot of needs throughout the city. But we are looking very closely at 37th Street on getting more maintenance out there and more programs to get it paved and take care of those issues.
Look, constituent wanted me to remind you tonight that the traffic going east of Indiana on 37th is a lot less than going west on 37th.
Correct. And we take all that into account.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we appreciate that.
Councilwoman Ortiz, and then Councilman Miller.
I thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Banks. Saturday night, I had a gentleman that apologized to me because he was traveling in the center lane. And he said he just got an alignment, and he's not tearing up his car again. So every time he goes down 37th, he's going to be in the middle lane. And I was going to ask that same question. Is there anything we can do just to smooth it over, you know, or, I don't know, fill it or whatever? Because it is pretty rough.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Ortiz, I drove that also on Monday. I can see where the problems are. And that's why I was at a conference all day today. I did not get a chance to follow up with Tony and Todd, but they did go out there today to take a look at it, to see if there is something we can do out there.
I appreciate that. And I'd like to just thank Trower team. Today, they went out and hit four blocks from Irvingham Street to Fremont. So I'd like to thank them. They're on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if you have this answer right away, but I don't know how long we've been using See Click Fix and recommended it to our citizens to use it. Anybody have an answer to that of when we kind of really started using See Click Fix? Five years ago? Okay. So there's an increase in potholes requested and served since we started using that. So there's probably a correlation of us utilizing and our citizens being more involved in the streets so that we can address, because if we know about the potholes are there, that we can address more. So the rising number in potholes field, I don't think would be an indication that we're having, our roads are worse than what they used to be. We're just able to address them at a faster fashion than we used to be.
That'd be correct. I go more based on the conditions of our road on that PCI score I shared earlier in the presentation.
Councilman Duggan.
Thank you, Mayor. The only people who never complain about potholes in Topeka are tire shop owners. Outside of that, everyone else is upset, understandably. So I'm going to caveat in a couple of these questions. We had a presentation on the highway fund issues and policy and finance, but of course, we turned part of that to pothole. So some of these will be repeat questions to Steve in front of everybody. A couple are new. But I will caveat with, the PCI score has gone up. And I do know, if anyone who's watched our CIP process the last few years and what we've done, there are absolutely finely roads that have been long neglected, being addressed. And all that is wonderful. A couple of my questions are, and part of it may have been addressed with Councilman Miller's questions related to more people paying attention with See Click Fix, but that PCI number, which is independent, I mean, it's a real number, but it is odd to see the PCI number going up, but also the pothole number going up. Because you would like to see some correlation the other way with those two. As one goes up, the other goes down.
And also, this year, our numbers are really high because we had a pretty significant winter. And the amount of snow, we had several snow events and thawing in between. So it was really entertaining this winter. Where one day, we're getting a lot of good advice on snow plowing, and then they'll follow up the question, "When are you going to fix those potholes?" While we're busy snow plowing. But a lot of it has to do with the weather. And I think that was the main issue why our numbers are so high this year is because of the winter we had, and it was an extended thaw. So there was more water getting in underneath the roads as well. But I do also believe more people are seeing it, more people hear it. We get more comments on social media where they're turning them in. I know that several council members get direct calls from their constituents that are relayed to us. I think there's just more awareness to the potholes and where the problems are so we're able to get out there and fix them.
And then the second thing is, and I guess this is my really question, and you addressed a little, but we talked about the fact that it's cold out, it's the middle of winter. There's only so many different materials we can use. But it really is hard to explain to people, I guess. And I'm with them, I guess, when I see a crew go out there, fill a hole, and 24 hours later, that hole is back. And so then, we end up sending the same crews to do the same thing over a two-week period, not the crew's fault. But I mean, so I guess my really question, there's really nothing else in the winter that we can explore that exists to try to reduce that, to make it a little better than what we use now? I know it may cost more, and that's a different conversation. But in the ideal world...
There's been a lot of interesting products and techniques that have come out in the last 20 years that I've seen everywhere, from a company in the Twin Cities had portable microwaves, where you would take the crumbling asphalt, throw it in, heat it up, and put it back in the hole. And they did great business for about four years until that proved it didn't work. And there's been numerous special cold mixes and unique products that people have claimed would be the answer to potholes in the winter, but nothing beats hot mix. And unfortunately, that's just the nature of living in the northern climates, middle of America and northern climates.
Someone really smart listening who wants to make a fortune, figure it out. Let's go.
I keep hoping I can figure it out myself.
My last thing is, and this, I guess, at some point, is sort of a philosophical issue, and we had this discussion of policy and finance, and City Manager wasn't able to be there. So I guess this is also for his edification tonight. But I look at some of the roads that we have on our CIP, but they're still four and five years out. And I get that. But we know they have pothole problems. And we know that they are potholes that even if we fix with the best method, six months later, those, they start to crumble again, or a year. And we're still four or five years out from that road. I would really like to see us start tracking better which roads we continue to have to send crews out that are part of that program. And if we're sending crews out there often on that same stretch of road, what is the cost of that in their time and expenses versus at some point, just going and overlaying that road? I understand there's a cost to that. It's $100,000, it's $150,000. But if at some point, that keeps it for the next four years, I don't have to send crews out there until I get the road on the pro, I would at least like us to take a look at that. And again, I know some of that's a philosophical discussion. It comes back before us, like, "Council, do you really want to spend money on this road, knowing we're going to tear it up in three or four years?" And I understand that. But it'd be nice to start seeing what maybe some of those costs were on some of these roads that are real problems, that are frustrating staff, frustrating crews, and frustrating citizens that keep driving over. So just something to throw out there for consideration as we move forward through some of these conversations. Thank you, Mayor.
Steve, I was, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I have to give it to you. You kind of walked into a storm.
Literally.
Yeah. So I had to come out to my street after that first snowstorm. But there is some good work. And everyone keeps on pointing out different things. And I can point out 37th. I can point out 6th. They all need work. Pointed out last week that, you know, that one road we were working on, there's much better projects. But I do have to commend that 21st is looking great, or, excuse me, Speaker Boulevard, from 29th to 21st is looking great. It's open on the Topeka Boulevard side of things. That road used to be a pothole heaven, and especially in front of the armory right there. So that project is looking really good. And so if people want to see kind of what's going on with our roads and how we're trying to get things caught up, Speaker Boulevard from 29th to 21st is one of those great examples to go look at.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of thoughts. One thing I do say to my people that talk to me, you know, you really can't effectively fill a pothole that is wet. Nothing is going to stick. And we had a lot of people that were angry about the potholes as the snow was still melting, but it's just not going to stick. And so appreciate all the work that the crews do. I did want to observe, having been on the council since that first half-cent sales tax first... half-cent sales tax first came in, we did go ahead, speaking of Thirty-seventh Street, on Southwest Seventeenth, when we kind of juggled the calendar on when things were going to get done, it was so bad that we did do, we have at least just once, gone in and done a mill and overlay when we restructured the calendar on getting one, pushing one back. So it can be done. I wondered if you are keeping, as part of these statistics now, are you comparing the pothole counts to when the street was last milling and overlaid or rebuilt?
That's all in the data for each road. How much we're tracking that, I guess I would need to look into that.
Is it? Good. I travel Tenth Street quite a bit between Washburn and downtown. And for the first time since I can remember, it is developing potholes. And what's significant to that to me was it was one of the first streets that was done. It was just done a mill and overlay. It wasn't rebuilt. That's when we just, it was after Tenth Street that we decided to rebuild streets. But even a mill and overlay is supposed to last, what, 10 years or 20?
That depends on the road, but we'd like to get 10 to 15 out of it for sure. But you have to do the post-treatments. You have to do your micro-surfacing and those things in a timely manner to keep water from infiltrating. Plus, a mill and overlay, if you do not correct your subsoil issues and your road base, you're just setting up for failure.
Well, what struck me about all that was exactly what you're talking about. I know we're going to talk actually about the half-cent sales tax later in this meeting about the CIP. But I do think we need to prioritize getting, I'm pleased to see the PCI go up because I think we set a really modest goal at first of just getting it over 60. But when we have streets that we redid that already need it again, and we have some that we haven't done yet, I hope we all can really look at how to prioritize getting the streets redone with that money. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer?
From my engineering days, I'm going to throw a fact out to you. I don't know the exact number, but we're in a region that has some of the highest number of freeze-thaw cycles in the U.S. There's a strip right through the center. We have, it's at least 30 freeze-thaw cycles per year. If you go further north, they stay colder longer, and they don't have some of the problems that we have. You go further south, they have fewer freeze-thaw cycles. So our pavements are constantly going through the stress of cold freezing to warming up, and then they go back down into the cold freezing. So we're going to have a lot of stress on our pavement. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think you kind of answered the question from Councilwoman Hillary, though. When we talk about PCI and mill and overlay and the micro-surfacing, I think it, oh, it's been two, three years ago, we talked about the value of the micro-surfacing to extend the life of those efforts with the mill and overlay. Is that program still being utilized? And can you see the success of it?
Yes, it is, Mayor. We're doing more of it this year. We're doing about $4 million this year in micro-surfacing and U-BASS, which is a little, it's similar to micro-surfacing, but you get a little more accurate or a little more aggregate into it. So you got a little thicker application. And that goes with the crack seal, and that's part of that $4 million also. We, I'm a firm believer in micro-surfacing. We're looking at another similar product called Pressure Pave that an outfit in Missouri has been doing, where it's, they do a mastic right in front of the micro-surfacing that will actually inject the oil into the pavement, and it's supposed to give you even better product. We're looking for roads that we could possibly do a pilot on using that also. But no, I'm a, anything you can do to help keep that surface sealed, that's the best defense you have to keep your roads longer.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Further questions, or Steve? Thank you, sir. Move on, Madam Kirk, to Agenda Item Five, Consent Agenda.
On the Consent Agenda, we have a professional engineering contract, or the approval of a professional engineering contract between the City of Topeka and Bartlett West, Inc. for providing design and construction documents for the City of Topeka Stormwater Pump Station Master Plan and the design and rehabilitation of the Oakland Pump Station under 2024 Capital Improvement Project Number 161013. And then we also have the minutes of the regular meeting of April 1, 2025. We are asking that those be deferred to the April 15 Governing Body Meeting as well. And there are no applications.
Okay. For the Consent Agenda, as read, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Banks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on now to Agenda Item Six, Action Items. Madam Kirk?
Okay, 6A, we have a public hearing on the advisability of creating a capital, community improvement district in the City of Topeka, Kansas, and undertaking and financing of certain community improvement district projects therein, and providing for the giving of notice in said hearing, Lawrence Bay Community Improvement District. And we also have the ordinance creating the Lawrence Bay Community Improvement District in the City of Topeka, Kansas, authorizing certain projects therein, approving the estimated cost of such projects, containing the legal description and map the boundaries of the district, approving the maximum amount and method of assessment, and approving the method of financing the projects.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Braxton Kopp, the Deputy City Manager, Marianne Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development, will lead us to this item.
Good evening, governing body. Just want to frame what this issue is tonight in front of you. At the last meeting in March, we had several items relating to Lawrence Bay. That included the development agreement that was approved. It included the first step of the RHID, or the Reinvestment Housing Incentive District, that was approved, and that has been sent on to Commerce. And then we set the public hearing for the CID. So what's in front of you tonight is the ordinance for the CID, or Community Investment District. Just to boil it down to the simplest, basic concept, what this is going to do is it's going to allow the future specials on the 16 lots owned by the Klosman-controlled entities, as well as the three city-owned lots, to be taken and spread out over the course of 20 years that will allow for reduction in the current amount of the special assessments. Right now, they're close to $300 a month. By spreading them out over 20 years, it's going to get them down to, in the $185 per month for the ones owned by the developer, because some of the special assessments, or some of the assessment, the payment that they're making is going to be used to pay down principal on those future specials. And so just to make it clear, we've handed out the ordinance, and that actually has the amount that's going to be assessed for each one of the 16 lots owned by the developer, as well as the three lots owned by the city. And that amount will include issuance costs as well as interest. And with that, I'll gladly stand for any questions.
Thank you, Braxton. Any questions? Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, a little bit bigger in the picture, and thank you so much for the back and forth with me this week. In terms of overall, the special assessments, because there's lots of chatter about people being concerned about how much accumulated in the past, what we've already covered, correct me if I'm wrong, what we've already covered in the development agreement is that the past due specials are going to be paid. And we're basically using the, and in fact, with a little bit extra, we're going to take that little bit extra, and the CID is being used in this case, basically just to refinance those, that, those special assessments, because you're kind of 10 years in already. And so to refinance them and stretch what's left over 20 years instead is what helps to reduce those payments. We're not subsidizing it. We're just using that as a tool to refinance. Correct?
That is a very accurate statement and very simply and well-put. We are simply refinancing the existing future specials using the CID as the tool for that.
And at the end of the day, they're all going to be paid by somebody else.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman, by Evie Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. So when we're talking about the assessments going from 300 a month to 185 a month, we're talking about these 16 lots. There's still all the other lots that were there, our money's due, property tax, specials, so we don't want to get these mixed up. And let the public think that everything is being rolled up into one. This is 16 lots that it is dealing with. Also, I would like to ask, just for my clarification, CID's are used, are not, is this the first time we've used a CID on anything of this nature for development, housing development? Because don't you usually see it for businesses, restaurants, retail stores, whatever the case may be? Just a yes and no, yes or no is fine.
Yes, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor? And to clear up kind of what's been going on with the public, it's pretty much we're getting told we need to foreclose on these. If we foreclose on these, we lose $7.7 million on all the properties total, correct? On all the specials?
You have that worksheet from last week. So at the last meeting in March, we circulated the spreadsheet that had all those other lots owned by Klosman-controlled entities, and total unpaid was right at $7 million.
Okay. So, but by state law, if we foreclose on those, that disappears, and we don't get that back at all, correct? The owed part?
The answer is a little more nuanced, because basically, they would be sold at auction, and then the city would have the ability at the auction to bid up to the amount of its specials to be able to purchase those, to at least have some control over the ones that had outstanding specials.
Thank you. Further questions?
Okay, as an action item, is there a motion from the body?
First, sorry, point of clarification, you actually need to open the public hearing first before you can take any action on an ordinance.
All right. At this time, then, we'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Hello, Danielle?
Thank you. I would like to read something from Topeka Capital Journal from a decade ago. Tim wrote this, "The City of Topeka will need to cover as much as an estimated $11.1 million in special assessment infrastructure costs unless builders develop homes in southwest Topeka's Lauren Bay Estates." It goes on to say that "the Lauren Bay situation illustrates why the city should consider taking steps to mitigate the risk it takes regarding a process through which the city forms special assessment benefit districts to encourage development. The city has long enabled developers to ask the city to form geographical districts to pay the city's cost to provide such services as water, sewer, street, infrastructure for new projects and developments. The city, after the work is completed, requires each lot owner to pay a certain amount annually as part of their property tax bill, generally 20 years. But when those assessments aren't paid, the city puts the bill, the mayor, well, guess goes on to say, and that goes back to the reason we need to perhaps have a new process so that doesn't happen again." Fast forward, just shortly after that, the editorial board actually stated council members and the mayor should craft and adopt a process that protects the taxpayers in the event that reality doesn't match expectations for some subdivisions. We can keep saying the same things over and over again, and the points have continued to be made. But I do believe that it's important to again point out, since this is public record now, that many of these homes that are there now have been paying the specials since 2015. While they are somewhat a bit lower, that's also a nuanced thing. Some of them are not paying for pond repairs. Some of them aren't paying for sewer. It's mixed and all over the place why they all pay different taxes, which doesn't make sense to me either. But they're also, that is going on until 2035, so that 20-year period of time. So in fact, we are giving a deal, and we are losing out money with this. So not quite sure why we see that difference in the other houses, but I think I'm also really confused as to why we don't see this reflected in our budget anywhere. Where's this loss been reflected? I think maybe that it has been discussed a little bit, or projected losses of not having these specials, because honestly, we don't need a potential new minor league baseball field, which is probably why we're going to be requesting a TIF district or something in the future, which we can't do while we have these on the books. And we need $8 million, a lot more than we need that development to happen. And that's always an option, to just not continue and request that that $8 million, because we've also set that standard, that we are going to have a big, big standard for but-for analysis. So that but-for analysis stating that this would not happen but for this investment, we know that that's also untrue. This is just simply a choice. We have many, many other houses that have been developed on that property in that area. We have had this developer purchase up millions of dollars' worth of other buildings since this has taken place. So a very high standard for the future specials that we're going to be having as well. So I just want to reiterate that we have set a standard in place that does, that we're not actually learning from the past on how to make things better as we look at ways to be able to have taxpayers feel confident in the system that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCur?
Good evening, Your Honor. How are you?
I'm well.
The CID is the most creative way to make this property add value. Rolling the existing specials into the CID so the new people that come in can afford the specials is creative. But what I want to know is how many people run a stop sign and then go down to the police department and turn themselves in and pay the fine? Really, we got to stop blaming Jim Klosman for this. And I've been the most vocal person about how Lawrence Bay's been handled than I think maybe anybody in this community. I don't know. I'm willing to be second. But what we've got going on here, and the other day, somebody up here lumped it in, oh, it's all the county's fault, nonsense. You've had the ability to sue the owner of those lots for the specials. My dear friend, Rich Eckert, who's one of the most, he's the smartest guy in the world. He's the one who told me that, hey, the City of Topeka needs to be suing for the specials. That was the day Kevin Cook told me that I really needed to be on city council and gave me that children's book. He says, "You seem to be more concerned about city affairs." Well, Larry Ma wasn't collecting on the taxes. And I bring up, whose job is it? Whose job is it? Is it the council, or is it the commissioner's duty to keep the treasure in line? But there's no reason not to stop this today. And nobody up there should say, "Our money, it's our money." Those bonds are current. We've been paying the bonds. And forget about it. That's old money. Quit trying to make that money back. You're not in the real estate business. The only way you make the money back is getting houses on there, paying taxes. So I hope you all support it. And you guys ought to be considering the leverage you'd have on the rest of the lots if you behave differently. Thanks.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the third time, is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Okay. We've had the matter presented. We've had public comments. We've had public comment. Is there an action from the body?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Deputy Mayor Kell, second by Councilman Dobler. I think we'll do a roll call, though.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Helfer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
Motion is carried. Thank you for your votes. Move on to action item B. Madam Clerk?
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez concerning the Kansas Homeland Security Region J Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the governing body. Jason Tryon, our Deputy Director of Public Works will lead us to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a discussion on this item last week. This is approval of the Region J Homeland Security Hazard Mitigation Plan. There were a few questions last week that we responded to, but if there's any additional questions, I'll take them now.
Okay. Any questions for Jason on this item?
Still have FEMA.
Well, for now, for now.
That's above my pay grade.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I mean, that's a good question, because I have a constituent who has a FEMA grant that they put on hold. They're not doing anything right now with FEMA. So what is our vote? I mean, if our vote adopts it?
So this item does not entitle the city to any grants. However, this would be a requirement if we were to apply for grants. This would be a condition of any consideration to be approved for grants. So this does not entitle us to a grant. It does not award us a grant. We do have grants in process that would be rejected if this item was not approved, but this does not confer anything onto the city by adopting this plan.
Because they were approved a grant, and they started getting all their stuff together, and they got a letter said everything's on hold. So, okay, so just to be safe, we want to approve this in case they don't do anything, and then we'll already have this in place, is what you're saying, Jason?
That's correct. This would be a precondition of applying for any FEMA-related grants under things like the Hazard Mitigation Program or the BRICS Program, for example.
Okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilwoman Valdivia Akala. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. We'll move on to action item C. Madam Clerk?
C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 501108 Phase 1, 501109 Phase 1, and 501110 Phase 1 for restoration, stabilization, and rehabilitation of Ward Martin Creek west of the intersection of 11th Street and Collins Avenue as further described in Exhibit A.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the governing body and the home lot. Our Utilities Department Deputy Director will lead us to this item.
Good evening. This location is adjacent to a sanitary siphon crossing, and there are multiple stormwater outfalls in the area. The degradation threatens to undercut the siphon and the outfalls, and repairs are necessary to avoid the structural failure of this nearby infrastructure. As was stated, this will replace approximately 250 linear feet of riprap on the banks and in the channel bed of the Ward Martin Creek, more specifically on the eastern border of Washburn Park, just west of the intersection of 11th and Collins. The project budget is set at $552,177 and will be cash funded out of our stormwater program. Public Infrastructure Committee did recommend for approval on March 18, and I would ask for the council's approval this evening.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You can call. Move action item D. Madam Clerk?
D is approval of the City of Topeka's Fiscal Year 2025 Consolidated Annual Action Plan and Budget.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the governing body. Randy Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development Services, and Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us to this item.
All right. Good evening. So we're here tonight seeking approval of the numbers that were presented to you during Carrie's presentation last week of our consolidated action plan so we can get our 2025 figures and funding amounts submitted to HUD for approval. I will note that we did receive some communication from a few individuals pointing out some of the things in our text amendments that we'll be making. We have a couple of weeks to clean up some of those items, but right now, what we're really focused on is the funding and the buckets that we're submitting to HUD. That's what we're seeking approval of this evening, and we'll have time to make text amendment changes as we go along to programming. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for you, Anna? Councilwoman Heller?
No questions, but I would move for approval, and if that needs to include move for approval of the dollar amounts, an expectation that you would be updating some of the text.
Motion to approve, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Action item E.
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez amending Sections 5.2510, 5.25020, 5.2530, 5.2550, and 5.25140 of the Topeka Municipal Code concerning ambulance services and repealing original sections.
Detective Perry?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the governing body. Randy Roy Bogman from the City Attorney's Office will lead us to this item.
So made some amendments to the ambulance service ordinances. In looking at these ordinances, realized they had not been updated for quite some time. Some of the language terminology was out of date, so we just made some changes to bring in some timeless language, correct some citations that were out of date, and just, I guess, make it a little more up-to-date, a little bit better. At this point, I would stand for questions.
And this ordinance was considered by the Policy and Finance Committee.
Yes, it was approved by the Policy and Finance Committee.
Is there a recommendation? Councilwoman?
Well, I don't know how hard they work, but I know how hard the Public Infrastructure Committee works, so I'm going to go ahead and trust that they work hard, too. Was this before us, when they said that one of the things they wanted to do, Amanda, was like every time we called them, they'd have to pay or something like that? Remember, we had that discussion?
There was a discussion when you considered the AMR annual franchise about making some amendments to that specifically. This is the more broader ordinance that says if you want to have an ambulance service in Topeka, this is the process to become franchised with the city, and I'm happy to defer to the Chair of the Committee. He has additional comments.
Who's the Chair?
That would be me. So a couple of things.
Four minutes, please.
Couple of things. So this came up for a few reasons. First, it just needed updating in general, because it's been a while since it's updated. It also came up because we now have a couple other services operating within the city limits that need to have franchise agreements, and they don't. And so I think one I... I'm not... One, I think, is working with us. The other, maybe not. We're going to get there. But I think the thought was, before we can move forward with them, we needed to update all of these first, before we took any next steps, positive or negative of those, because... And the franchise agreement exists for several reasons. One, that's fair, because we currently have a company operating under it, so everybody should operate under it. Those franchise agreements also ensure that people have the right licenses, that they're licensed by the state, that it's the right people on those transports. So there's a lot of different steps to that. And so that's kind of how this came up, was we had some people saying, hey, I went to this meeting with this new service. And some of us said, what new service? They don't have a franchise agreement in our city. So that's what got this ball rolling. And so I think once this is done, then legal can follow up with those new services and take whatever steps they need to take, either get them in compliance or tell them, eh, bye.
I appreciate that. I know for a long time, our firefighters, they're the first ones on the scene, so they're the ones that's doing the lifting and all of that. We don't get reimbursed for that, but we're on the scene. And then, once they show up, they take over, you know? And I've seen them literally put them on the gurney, get them in the ambulance and whatever. So just wanted to be fair. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make sure I understand, this is not a franchise agreement with AMR. This is just an overall...
This is the ordinance that establishes the framework of how do you get a franchise with the City of Topeka.
Right. Pretty straightforward. I'll be in support. Thank you.
Are there questions? Any action from the governing body on this?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, second by, was it Councilman Dobler?
Or Miller.
Okay.
Or Dobler.
Or Dobler. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to non-action items. Madam Clerk?
A is a discussion of the proposed 2026 to 2035 capital improvement plan and 2026 to 2028 capital improvement budget.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the governing body. Josh McInerney, our Budget and Finance Division Director. Steve Groh, our Director of Public Works, will lead us to this item.
Good evening, Mayor and governing bodies. So tonight's our second night talking about the CIP. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the citywide half-cent sales tax projects. But first, we wanted to show a video about what we've accomplished in past projects that have been approved in the CIP. So we think it's always good to obviously talk about the future, but we want to show you guys and the public what has also been accomplished in the past. So, Ob Dan, play that video for us.
More than 100 capital improvement plan projects were completed in 2024. Among the larger projects was the reconstruction of southwest Topeka Boulevard from 29th Street to 21st Street. As part of the larger Topeka Boulevard improvement efforts, this stretch of the Boulevard received full-depth concrete pavement repair, mill and overlay of the 29th Street intersection, added curb and gutter between 29th and 27th, widening of the intersection at 27th Street for a dedicated left-turn lane, ADA sidewalk ramp replacements, stormwater sewer inlet replacements, and water main replacement between 27th and 24th Streets. Southwest 25th Street from Yurish Road to Kings Row also received several updates, including replacement of deteriorated storm pipe and curb inlets, replacement of some curb and gutter, sidewalk ramp repairs, full-depth patching, and mill and overlay. Improvements were made to Northeast River Road, including new curb and gutter, storm inlets to improve drainage, new full-depth concrete pavement from Crane Street to Hills, and new full-depth asphalt pavement from Hills to the River Road Park entrance. In the Noto Arts and Entertainment District, crews created a raised table through the intersection of Kansas Avenue and Gordon Street. The intersection also received storm sewer work, sidewalk, and curb and gutter. The Central Topeka intersection of 10th Avenue and Washburn Avenue slash Lane Street received a new traffic signal. The busy northwest Elm Row Avenue received mill and overlay from Highway 24 to Topeka Boulevard, as well as some storm sewer replacement and pavement patching. And southwest 6th Avenue received ultra-thin bonded asphaltic surface, or U-bass, from McVicker Avenue to Monroe Street. The intersection of 6th and Willow was also closed as part of this effort to prepare 6th Avenue for heavier traffic during KDOT's I-70 Polk Quincy Viaduct Project, or PQV. Also as part of PQV preparation, the Utilities Department undertook a massive effort to complete six projects downtown, relocating utility infrastructure to accommodate for the new, wider PQV. Crews removed and replaced or relocated more than 14,200 square yards of pavement, nearly 6,000 feet of sanitary sewer, more than 2,500 feet of storm sewer, and almost 7,000 feet of waterline. Utilities also completed a new million-gallon water storage tank to keep up with the demand of businesses and residents in southwest Topeka. In total, the City of Topeka resurfaced 52 lane miles of pavement in 2024, fully reconstructed just over four lane miles of pavement, and milled and overlaid 30 lane miles. Throughout the city, 23,555 linear feet of sidewalk was constructed or replaced. 49,534 linear feet of curb and gutter was also replaced. The city's Utilities Department replaced or rehabilitated 7,642 linear feet of storm sewer system, 4,029 linear feet of sanitary sewer collection system, and 22,948 linear feet of water mains. $58.5 million was spent on storm water, wastewater collection or treatment, and drinking water treatment and distribution systems. $15.5 million repaired or replaced streets, traffic signals, and sidewalks. And $3.3 million of the budget enabled repair and vital updates to city-owned facilities and building structures. In total, 111 capital projects were completed in 2024, representing around $77 million budgeted dollars invested into our community assets and infrastructure.
So I'd like to thank Ali Williams and Public Works for narrating that video, and also Dan and Utilities and Public Works, other employees, for creating that, because I think it's a good kickoff for tonight's meeting. But as far as the first round presentations go, and I know it's not on your screen yet, but covering the citywide half-cent sales tax, and we've reviewed this before, but the citywide half-cent sales tax was a 10-year tax. That was passed to fix existing streets, curb and gutters, sidewalks, street lighting, and then at sunsets, October 1, 2029. So you want to pull up the presentation, Dan? We should. We send it over. But so currently, there's about a fund balance of $17.5 million in there. And kind of like the general fund sales taxes, obviously, that's a high fund balance for what we have. And so sales tax during COVID appreciated greatly, and we thought it was going to fall off like a cliff. And so we cut projects in the 2020 and 21 CIP. The inverse happened, so that's how there's been an accumulation of the fund balance over the last couple of years. And this year's CIP, we're looking to raise the pavement management program from that $11 million we talked about earlier tonight to $14 million per year in order to spin down that fund balance, to show the public that we're spinning that down before if we went back to a possible vote in the future when it expires. And then, a couple of... The increase in the pavement management program, it was already in the video, but a couple of those projects that we've done in the past are Northeast River Road, Northwest Elm Row, Southwest 25th Street, Yurish to Kings Row. And all of those projects have to go back to the Public Works Infrastructure Committee anyway. So again, this isn't the last time you'll see these projects in the CIP. You'll see at the committee level and eventually for approval at the council level. And then, just as a final reminder, we've talked about this as well, that half-cent sales tax brings in about, in 2024, about $19.9 million. So then I'll pass it off to Steve to actually get into the nuts and bolts of actual projects.
Here's the projects that we fund with the citywide half-cent sales tax. We'll start with the Pearl Wag, their sidewalk ramp programs. We also have projects for curb and gutter programs, about $900,000 a year. Just about $1 million a year in our alley repair programs. We're proposing $14 million starting next year for our pavement management program. $4 million on our street contract preventive maintenance program, which we talked about earlier during the bottle presentation. And $100,000 a year in our sidewalk repair program, and also another $100,000 a year in our street light replacement program. Our Pearl Wag sidewalk ramp program, that is our pedestrian ramp replacement projects to make sure that they meet standards. 2026 budget would be $300,000, which allows us to repair between 90 and 120 ramps. Each of these ramps cost between $2,500 and $3,500 each, depending on the conditions to replace. Our curb and gutter program, our proposed budget for 2026 will be $900,000, and these are projects that are generated by CCLIC fix complaints and also public requests. Our alley repair program, it's $1 million a year. We can do about five alleys per year doing this, at about $170,000 each. Our pavement management program, again, this would be our mill and overlays, full-depth replacements. We're proposing increasing that, as Josh mentioned, to $14 million per year. Our contract... We're proposing increasing that, as Josh mentioned, to $14 million per year. Our contract preventative maintenance program, that's our micro-surfacing, U-BASS, crack sealing. We're proposing holding that steady at $4 million. And then, the sidewalk repair program, which includes a 50/50 model, we're proposing keeping that at $100,000, as well as $100,000 for our street light replacement program for next year. That will replace about 10 dollars next year. Our major citywide, our major projects proposed for the using citywide half-cent sales tax projects in our CIP include Southeast Quincy Street between 8th and 10th, the intersection of Northwest Meninger Road and North Topeka Boulevard, 45th Street between Gage and Cambridge, and the next phase on Southwest Topeka Boulevard, which will be from 29th Street to 38th Street. The Quincy Street project is a reconstruction of this. We're looking at a variety of options. We're looking at potentially a 2027 construction. This would include a possible road diet, road diet, removal of a signal, and plus additions of RFBs, some ball bolts, and a buffered bike lane. Northwest Meninger Road and North Topeka Boulevard project is a joint project with Shawnee County. Some of you are aware that two legs on Meninger Road do not line up. They're offset, which creates a lot of issues with conflicting left turn traffics. We're proposing to do this project in 2027, and the county will participate in this project. The Topeka Boulevard between 29th and 38th Street, this would be a mill and overlay with some base patching, select curb replacements. Traffic signal upgrades at 29th and 37th Streets, fully reconstruct those two intersections. We're going to need to do some minor right-of-way acquisitions starting this year, some minimal utility impacts. But right now, we're scheduling to do this project in '26 and '27. And then, the 45th Street project that you heard about last week, between Gage and Cambridge, this year, we're looking to start design of a shared use path. We're getting ready to issue an RFP for engineering services. And upon approval, we would look at doing utility relocations in 2027, followed by roadway reconstruction in 2028.
Okay. Questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Uh, we go back to, is it Gage and Cambridge?
Is, is the county going to help on that? Or is that all us?
That's all us.
Is that in the county?
No, it's in the city.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. And I've got a series of questions, and so forgive me. And I spoke up when you introduced the CIP. I'm just, we'll take a moment to express concern that with all the streets that we need done, and the fact that this was intended to rebuild our streets, do the major maintenance on the streets, I'm very concerned about allowing the $4 million for preventive maintenance, which, back when this was passed, was intended to stay in, in the operating budget so that we could do the major street redos with this money. So I'll just put that on the table for right now. I did ask for a copy of the CIP budget with it set up that way, and Josh said he'd do it, but just, just trying to watch for it. Then, when we have, not so much the curb and gutter, but some of these other specific programs, like the alley repair, the sidewalk repair, are you going to get those? We got behind on money because we did not have these planned in advance. And so, I thought we were at a point where there was a commitment that when the CIP was proposed and passed, that we would have at least the projects intended for the upcoming year itemized in the plan.
So the two, you mentioned the sidewalk program, that's a 50/50 program. We don't exactly know those locations, because those are based off request. And then, as Steve alluded to on the curb and gutter, those are based off CCLC fixed?
You're right.
Okay, sorry.
You're right. I forgot that the sidewalk one was 50/50. But on the alley repairs, if we know what they're going to be this spring, then we can get them bid in the summer or in the, in the fall and, and get them done.
Correct. And then, most of those alleys, let me go back to that slide for context. So, we have a tentative list, and we can, we can send that over to the governing body. Those are usually paired in tandem, if we're doing utility work too, to where they're over 250. So that's also going to be seen by the Public Works Infrastructure Committee and eventually going back to council. So most, there's, we're going to, you're going to see them again at the governing body level, but we can also provide a tentative list on the backend. And then, obviously, the big one is the, if I can find it, is the pavement management program. Those have to be, and we can get you a list of that, too. That, regardless if it's over 250 or not, has to go back to the Public Works Infrastructure Committee to be approved as a list anyway, which I think we do either in the later summer or the fall. I can't remember on the timeline, and I'll have to check in on that. So, that, that committee will see that, and they'll give a recommendation to the governing body. But we can, we can get you a tentative list.
Well, and I bring that up because, the only reason we created the Public Works Infrastructure Committee a couple of years ago was because these things weren't being planned in advance, and so things were slipping. They weren't getting bid, they weren't getting done. And so, just because we've created that, all that, the best, best planning would be to have these in the CIP. So, we'd already voted on them, and that doesn't, they don't have to go anywhere except back to us, really, but at least not to PWI until they're ready to go into action. We're, we're getting a lot of hard work that has to be done by council committees, and this, this planning in advance, I really would encourage that we get that done. Again, you're right, alley repair and the pavement management, you know, not just what the, what the list looks like and which ones are the worst, but you all have to do the planning based on what street work we're doing in other parts of town to prioritize those and make them work. And if we can get that work done at the time we're passing the CIP, I think we will all be stronger for it. Again, we used to always do that. We actually did it for the whole CIB, all three years, so that we had it sketched out with specifics. And it seemed stronger that way. So I just want to recommend that. A street light replacement, also, back to the alleys, you've got that they're averaging $170,000, but some of our alleys have cost a million dollars just themselves. So, again, planning that out, it's taking us forever. And, and again, that's slipping into this extra money that we have of the $4 million to do the preventive, to the preventive maintenance, the annual preventive maintenance. Instead of fixing the alleys and streets that are still languishing is, is of concern to me. So I guess when you get to this, what's your Slide 11, that says major citywide half-cent sales tax projects, you're naming some of the ones that you're considering, yet on the pages that are itemized, they're for 2027 or 2028. So being real specific about what we're going to start. Those are going to have project sheets, right?
They will. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
I don't want you to go too far back, and not now. You can provide it. It would be nice to see what the 20, like 25, 24, maybe even 23 on these programs were as a comparison, because I know some are going to be different, some are going to be the same, some. So it would just be nice to know that as a reference as to what shifts we're making. But under the, the street contract preventative maintenance program, have we current, currently had that as a line item just specifically to that? Or is that a new?
No, that, that's been in the past. And so, in the past couple of years, it's been about $3 million, and it's done on a quadrant basis. And this year, we're bumping it up to four.
Okay.
And I have a clarifying question on your, your first point.
Yeah.
Were you wanting a, a list of projects we've done in the past off the?
No, just literally this same thing, but what we spent the three, like the two or three.
Got you, okay.
Just so we can have a reference to see what changes, what shifts we're making.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
That would just be helpful to have.
Got you.
Yeah. So then, my next question is, does any of that, I know they're slightly different, but offset the horrible presentation we saw, not horrible presentation, but that showed us these, the highway fund dollars that were going to be $3 million on the hole, and we saw, we saw a wonderful presentation in Policy and Finance that you'll see soon, that says because the sale, the gas tax money has gone down on the state highway fund, those dollars we're getting are on the path to be about a $3 million hole for our maintenance program. And I'm just wondering if any of that million-dollar increase over here does anything to help that?
No, it does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
On the alley repair, is it like the worst alley, or is it as they requested? How do we do that?
Um, if, I'd have to, I'll defer to Russell. He's an alley expert compared to me.
I can, I can speak to that. Thank you. A couple of years ago, we completely revamped our entire alley program. And we had, we developed collectively with maintenance staff as well as the engineering staff, criteria by which to judge the alleys. And this ranges from the surface condition to the land use, as well as whether or not there were underlying utility issues. And then, we had staff go out and rated every one of our alleys, both the paved ones and the unpaved ones. And then, we have created a ranked list based on the overall score of that. And then, that's what we are going on. So it's very easy for us to, to say, here's our next tranche of alleys, right? And we work with utilities, because if they come to us and say, we have a failure of the sanitary sewer under this alley, then we are going to move that one up to the list, right? So that we're doing this collaboratively. So hopefully, that helps. Glad to stand for any questions you have on the alley program.
Councilman Duncan?
Similarly, curb and gutter. What is our waitlist right now for the curb and gutter program? I mean, I know we're getting people in, we have some money, but what is just the wait, average waitlist?
We are putting together a bid package right now that will allow us to encumber the 2024 program funds. So I would say we're probably in the year, year and a half waitlist.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. Want to give some credit to some work on that. We, we used to have a five-year waitlist on curb and gutter, or there was kind of a common joke that it was on toilet paper and that you couldn't find it. And so, this is really great to hear the progress on, on the curb and gutter. Just wanted to point out, too, that as we looked at the CIP in relation to the full city budget, and we were so glad to have the half-cent sales tax money that would be, to use cash for major city projects, the idea, as we reduced our borrowing and reduced our debt service, was that it would release money that could be used for preventive maintenance in the tight years. And so, this three or four million that we're talking about does correspond to the money that the finance staff had identified. We could probably shift from debt service to operating budget. So, just want to make sure that with the way we manage the street projects better, that we stay, stay really in tune with the, using the cash for those big projects so that our streets are fixed and that we're not borrowing for them, because it matters. Thanks.
Further questions? CNN, thank you very much, gentlemen. Oh, Councilman Duncan?
Well, it's, it's not, it's really for City Manager. Can you just walk us through what the rest of our CIP discussions, I mean, what is our timeline here? At what point, if we have recommend, I mean, any time, I know, the sooner you get them, but you would like to see us start to make some recommendations, suggestions, amendments, if we have them? Just curious what our timeline frame here is. That would be very helpful, I think, for all of us.
I'll defer to Josh, sir.
I would just say, I would say as soon as possible, because obviously, if we move a road up, let's say we move, let me go to this. Let's say we want to move Quincy, Quincy back. That can, I'm just, I'm going to make up a scenario. We could have a cross project on Kansas Avenue going on at the same time where that's not really feasible with closure lanes. And so, I'd say sooner the better. It'd be my, that's my preference, though.
Sure, what?
Plus, depending on the project, there could be a few years of project preparation, design, sculpting, engineering studies that need to be done before we can actually do the project.
And what meeting have you penciled in us that you'd like us to vote on this?
I think, so, so next week, we're doing GEO and GEO bonded and JATO projects. May 6th, we're doing utilities. And then, May 13th would probably just be an open discussion day, so on probably May 20th. But that's, that's obviously contingent on the governing body being comfortable.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we, are we still bound by a resolution that limits our bonding per year to a certain amount, like $9 million or something?
Yes, I would have to pull the actual resolution to tell you what that number is, but happy to.
Could you get that out?
So, yeah, it's, I can send it to the governing body. So it's $27 million over three years.
Three years.
I think that was set in, in 2015, in 2015-ish or something like that. So, but I can send the resolution. But the last couple of years, we've, the council, in addition to voting on the CIP, has also voted to exceed that. And then, but also, on the same time, just because we approved in the CIP doesn't mean we're selling the bonds and that's the final list.
Right.
That's another process. So, we could say in the CIP, $30 million over three years, but in reality, it could be like 24 when we actually sell the bonds.
So, if I could, Public Works Director and I were at the State Transportation Conference today, and KDOT had an interesting presentation. So they have the 10-year highway program, which Polk Quincy is part of, K-10 and Lawrence, all the big projects. And they showed that the original project scopes were created in 2020. And of course, they had an inflation factor, probably 3% or something like that. We're already, at this point, as far as KDOT is concerned, about 20% over that. By 2030, that gap is 50%. So inflation is...
Yeah, they showed the projects that were scoped in 2020, that in 2024, the pricing had gone up 40%.
In case I wasn't clear, my sidekick. So I, I guess what I'm getting around to in a, in a roundabout way here is, we need to relook at that, because what we did in, in 2015, obviously, the intent is good. And I think we need to look at that in terms of what kind of debt service we can afford over the next, next few years. But also, we need to look at it in terms of where we are right now, 10 years later, based on current construction costs and where we, where things are probably going to go over the next few years. So, if we could make that part of the discussion, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, and that, that is in next week's discussion, because, and so, that is part of it. Talking about the current balance in our debt service fund and like a five-year mill projection based on the current mill. So we, we're talking about that.
Man, we are.
Yeah.
We're like right on. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
With that horrifying information, I guess my question would be, then what kind of numbers are we using as we're factoring in projects three, four, or five years out as we're, as we're doing those? I mean, I know, the world's going to look different in five years, and it's, so I know it's not perfect science, but are we tweaking those numbers then as part of, with that information?
Yeah, the engineering estimates went way up over the last year and a half, based on the accelerated inflation post-pandemic. And that's why you're starting to see some projects coming in underestimates. So now, as we're doing our estimates for future projects, the, we jacked it, the inflation factor up a lot, and now we're trying to get it back dialed in. But as Secretary Reed from Kansas Department of Transportation pointed out today, now we're all wondering what's going to happen with tariffs, because we're already seeing massive potential increases. And the biggest driver we have in Public Works is oil-based products. And a lot of the heavy oils that you use for asphalt and stuff come from Canada.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Procedural question for these upcoming ones, then. You all gave us our CIP books, actually, three or four weeks ago, right?
Correct, yeah.
Should, has anything changed since you put those together?
No, no figures have changed. There, on the utility side, there was a correction, but those, those are my fault. But it's only lowering project authority. So I didn't see, but we'll disclose that when we get to the utilities one.
And we've got the one new project that got added without any offsets last week, right? The 30, 45th Street project is new.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Okay. So should we start bringing our notebooks with us to these meetings? Or do we, the detail that some of the questions have been about is in there?
Yeah, I would, I would encourage to either use the CIP book online or bring your notebook, and then review the presentations beforehand.
Thank you.
And if I could add to that, we do have an upcoming budget work session, so...
So definitely would love to hear the feedback during, during that work session here in a couple of weeks as well. If there's proposed revisions or changes to the CIP, it's definitely a good forum to bring that for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Okay, no further non-action items. Move to public comment. We have two individuals signed up, first being Ms. Sandra Lassiter.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I want to start with, I want to commend you, Ms. Alcala. And I want to commend you, Mr. Banks. I was not here, but I understand that you voted against a recent contract about our city employees and about our attorneys. And I am very proud of you for doing that. I was concerned because I thought maybe some other persons would abstain. And I know there's one city council person, he was well-known in the past for abstaining. I won't call any names. And I thought, he abstains, he abstains? Oh, my goodness, why? Maybe because he had a conscience about what he was about to vote about. But I just wanted to know why the city council would allow the Fraternal Order of Police to handcuff you to a contract where you are ill-advised to defend someone in wrongdoing? Because some of you know, there are some persons in the city that were fired and they did not get a million-dollar attorney to represent them. But it seems that sometimes when persons enter into a situation or relationship with our city, that, or a lawsuit, they find that they cannot access the info because it's confidential. And there are city persons and citizens who don't understand that. However, our Fraternal Order of Police provide their support, but our suggestion with a few concerned citizens coming together, we would like to see you renegotiate this contract. It has been said that it's impossible to do. It is not impossible. That's not true. And we'll talk further about that in the future. I hope it won't be too soon, but in immediate future. But the Fraternal Order of Police should provide their own insurance for their police officers and to cover them with attorney fees for police officers who enter into a malpractice, abusive, or brutal behaviors. Police should be, have a personal investment in their community. Our doctors do, lawyers do, sometimes social workers do, have a personal investment, and they provide their own insurance. The citizens of this city carry a heavy burden paying a city attorney $160,000 in assistance with a handsome hefty salary. Now, the, the concern is that they seem to have the privilege and flexibility to pass legal work to external firms. The firm that was recently named in the paper, they talked about, it's a possibility that we will pay them $50,000 in a lawsuit. And the possibility of that court case running, and I've been in several of them, that run over a week, possibly will cost our citizens $1 million because we must have to prove ourselves or say that we're more powerful. But our Fraternal Order of Police can pay their own insurance and take the burdens off the back of our citizens. We have citizens in this community that are under a burden of mart, mortgages, rent, food, utilities, taxes, all of that. And yet and still, we will file a lawsuit that costs this city millions of dollars unnecessarily. I believe you've been ill-advised by a city attorney office, and they are taking the opportunity to pass their legal workings on to someone else when they should be taking care of the citizens in Topeka. It looks like I'm running out of time. Do I have another minute?
Ms. Lassiter, how much time do you need? Couple minutes?
Give me another minute. I only have one more minute to say something.
We should give her two minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Give me two because sometime I get long-winded.
Proceed, Mayor.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe we have about 125 citizens in this city. 50% of our citizens or persons in our city make less than $50,000 in salary. So our incomes are less. We're a small city, and I do believe that our monies are being placed in the wrong place, especially when we have lawsuits and we're hiring external firms to do the work for us. And we are paying city attorney and their associates enough money to represent us if necessary. Let the federal, let the Fraternal Order of Police pay their salaries. They're the only ones that seem to have the immunity and the protection in our city, not our regular citizens. Thank you very much.
Second, Mr. Henry McClure.
Your Honor, good to, good to see you again. What recently happened with Senate Bill 104 is mind-blowing. It really, all of a sudden, Brenda Dietrich, the county counselor, the city attorney, all of a sudden got a block or got a, bring forward Senate Bill 104 to squelch the Citizens Commission. The Citizens Commission is something that some of us in the citizens, the citizenry, have been trying to be, bring forward. But now, all of a sudden, since people are trying to invoke the fact that we need the Citizens Commission, it gets, now it's optional. Well, it was law for five or six years, and the county didn't do it. So they don't have to follow the law. And now, with all of a sudden Senate Bill 104 popping up, it's optional. What, what makes you think we'll get it through with it's optional? And I wonder, I was about ready to sue over this, and I wonder if some lawyer leaked that out. But, um, but the, I want to know whose fingerprints are on that? Who directs, who directs in this community or amongst you all to have your city attorney write such a letter? Who, and I've made a court request. I can't wait to see how that's answered. You ought to see how the court request was answered by Eckert about the AT&amp;T building. And my city council person told me, well, just go look at the Secretary of State and you'll see who owns it. But you can't figure it out from who owns an LLC. But that person's still learning how to do things in this community. Man, this is, this is crazy, but I'm going to tell you something. This is, uh, struck a chord. It's like, what's interesting, the best thing that you did was get in the way of 104, creating that. Because now people are beginning to believe me that the bureaucracy of this community is out to get, to work against the citizenry. The Citizens Committee is a beautiful thing. It would, it's like, all the government entities in here have computers, but they're not hooked to the internet. The Citizens Committee at least puts everybody together and has a forum where the people can come forward. You guys have been blaming Klaskman for Lawrence Bay? Nonsense. I blame Jeto. Jeto's been getting together for a decade and they haven't figured it out. That's their job, joint economic development. You guys won't be accountable, you guys are zero accountable for anything. You'll take credit and be at the ribbon cutting for something you had nothing to do with, but you're not accountable for the downside. It's terrible. It's, it's a shame. The Jeto, the thing with the AT&amp;T building, nine and a half million, and you're talking about roads? You got $5 million a year you can put into roads. You're giving it to an NGO that just wastes it away. Make sure you guys get reelected. It's all going to catch up with you. It is. It's going to catch up with you faster than you know. People are listening. People are watching. And people want change. Thank you. Good night.
Okay. We're going to move on now. No further public comment. Two announcements, and I'll start with the clerk.
Okay. On the April 15th governing body agenda, we have two board appointments to the Topeka-Shawnee County Public Library Board of Trustees. We will have two presentations. On the consent agenda, we have an ordinance for the expenditures from March 1st, 2025 to March 28th, 2025. We have the resolution for the top city half marathon and 5K noise, noise exception, and a professional service contract for the Stormontville Healthcare, Inc. For action items, we have the resolution setting the public hearing for the CID Improvement District for Southwest 32nd Terrace and Southwest Topeka Boulevard. We have an ordinance for downtown parking, as well as a resolution for downtown parking. We have the resolution for additional funding for operations and maintenance of Hotel Topeka. And then we also have a resolution for the homelessness discussions. Non-action items, we have a discussion for the 2026 to 2035 capital improvement plan and 2026 to 2028 capital improvement budget overview. And that is all that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me this evening. Appreciate you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank city staff for working on the potholes and actually working on the bridge. Thank Braxton and his team that came out Saturday and did that. Last week was a hard week for me. Lost three young people to suicide, and, and it's real. Just like, this is real. And it's probably somebody that you're even looking at or you even know. But are we listening? Are we listening? That's what's really, really sad. I worked in the legal department at DCF, and I see all those cases come through there. So they're not, they're not pretty. So make sure that we're listening. You know, Kansas Children's Service League was here, and they said, if you see something, say something. And I agree with that. That's also our police officer's motive. I, I agree with that. But when the kids say something, when the kids are saying something, we need to listen. And we're not listening. We are not listening. When vibrant young men between the age of 20 and 30 can take their lives because they feel like there's no opportunity, we're not listening. And that's heavy on my heart because I love kids. So I would ask for your prayers and your continued support. If you see a young person, give them a hug. It doesn't have to be yours. Make sure it's just a young person. And let them know that they are important in this world, and they are important in this community. We had our way-to-work orientation. We had 50 applicants. We had a room full of people. It was awesome. And that program is just, we, the way-to-work program is employing kids from 14 to 16-year-olds to get their first job. And it was awesome. We've got to stop. We've got to. When I look in our churches, and I, and I'm not singling out nobody, I'm, I'm, I'm that person too. There's, there's no young people there. There's no young people. When you go to the schools, we're so ready to send them home, but that's their safe haven. That's where they come to act up, and they're acting up because they feel comfortable. Mental health is real. It's real, real. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Didn't mean to say all that, but that's just been really, really heavy on my heart.
Thank you. Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing.
Deputy Mayor.
To go along with what Councilwoman Ortiz said, be very aware, there are such things called suicide clusters, suicide chains, and it's, it's the domino effect of one person commits suicide, so then another person might look up at that person and go, well, if they gave up, I'm going to give up. I, I dealt with this when I was in middle school. I had it two different times when I was in middle school, and once when I was in high school, where I lost several friends to the suicide chain, suicide cluster, whatever term you prefer. And it can be a very sobering occasion when you lose three, four, five-plus young people in a quick amount of time. And so please be aware, if, even if your child knows, just knows a little bit about the person. Talk to them, open them up, ask them if they need, need to talk to someone else. You know, I always told my daughters, you don't want to talk to me, you don't want to talk to your mom. You have a lot of family members and a lot of friends, parents or friends you can talk to, so please give them all the avenues to open up whenever they want to. Today is National Zoo Lover's Month, so the weather's getting great out there, so please go check out the Topeka Zoo. We, it just keeps on getting better and better over the years. I remember taking my, my step-grandmother out there a few years ago, and she went out there, she hadn't been in 30, 40 years, and she was amazed on what it looked like over that time period. And finally, this is Second Chance Month. It's a nationwide effort to raise awareness and collateral consequences for criminal conviction, to unlock, unlock a second chance opportunity for people who have completed their sentence and become contributing citizens. You know, the one thing we want to stop crime, we need to look at things to stop recidivism. I've worked at Lance Correctional Facility, I've worked at the halfway house. If these men and women don't have opportunities, when they walk out the door, they're just going to go back to the life they're, they're doing, and it's going to result them going back to prison, having a lot of victims there. So, you know, look at, look at people's past. You know, I understand there are certain, certain crimes that you can't look past, but there's definitely a lot that you can, especially the non-violent crimes. And look at those and give those people opportunities because when they're done, they're done, and they want to, they want to, they want to get their life going in the right direction. I've seen it personally, working at a prison, and there's several of those inmates that I would have be my neighbor today because they were done with that life. But lots of times, it's just when they're done with that life, having that opportunity to move forward. So please, think about giving people second chances. And just talk to them and see what they're all about before you just look in and see that little felon box checked and moving on from that. But bring the person in, talk to them. If they're a good fit, please give them a chance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Miller.
Mayor, thank you. I, just a second ago, thought about, I wanted to follow up with Councilwoman Ortiz's thoughts as well, but I don't, I'm not sure I can make it through it. So I will pass in this moment, but I will speak on this another time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dobler.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things. Comment period is still open at the Kansas Corporation Commission as Evergy has requested a rate hike moving forward. I submitted on behalf, as my capacity as a city councilman for at least my district, if not the entire city, also as a rate payer, as a stockholder in Evergy, opposition and objection to that rate increase. Last time they did this was two years ago, and at that time, the commission decided what they wanted was too high, so it was reduced. Nothing's changed in those two years. It also only applies to our area and not to the metro area. In fact, the metro area up in the Kansas City area saw theirs reduced two years ago, and the majority of Evergy construction is up in that area. So I would just encourage everyone, if you want to see what my comments were, you can go on my social media or my website and see the full letter. They'll have hearings in June, one in Wichita and then one here, I believe, in town at Washburn University. So I'll try to get those comments in at that time also. But let citizens know that that comment period is still open if they want to put something in on the Kansas Corporation Commission website. Thank you to Councilwoman Ortiz for inviting me over to the way-to-work. Was able to hang in there at the end and talk to some of those kids. And it's always, to her point, it's a great program. I wish we had more slots for all those kids, you know, but we, we've expanded it and done our best, and that program does mean a lot to those kids. And it's a fun session because they walk through things we take for granted as we get older, how to get older, how to interview, how to dress for the interview, how to respond to questions properly, really basic skills that they need, so it's a great program. And then my last thing is, the other night, they closed all these submissions for the naming of the new professional hockey team that's coming to Topeka. So I think in the next week or so, you'll see their top five submissions that they've chosen from everything everyone's submitted, and you'll be able to vote on those. I'm sure for however many times my suggestion will once again be rejected, but I hope it cracks the top five. As everybody knows, Topeka means a great place to dig potatoes, and I have always said we are missing the boat by not having the Topeka Screaming Taters. And I think if they named it that, you can have a great mascot and a fun name, and everyone would love it, but we'll see if my submission cracks the top five, but I'm not holding my breath on that, Mayor, so. But I want everyone to know to look out for that, so they can go and vote and help pick the, pick the name for the new professional hockey team. Thank you, Mayor.
Taters, huh?
Screaming Taters.
Screaming Taters. Girls and women hofer, can you beat that?
No, not a chance. I just wanted to give a shout-out. There's a spot on, I guess you could say, the edge of the on-ramp at 470 in Wanamaker that tends to collect a lot of trash. And lately, it's gotten pretty bad, and one of my constituents called, I've heard about it before I saw it, I wasn't the only one that was seeing this. And yesterday, there was a group of, the KDOT prison crew was out cleaning it up, and they did an incredible job. The crew is administered by Rhonda Clemmons, who is the supervisor of our Blake Crew. And the other person that, who helped with this was Steve Ballman from KDOT. So I appreciate everyone's work who came out and got that cleaned up. I know it's, more stuff's gonna blow back in, but it just, it gives us a very bad look when somebody's out there and they see everything trashed up like that, so I appreciate it when we have crews that will go out and clean it up. So, thank you to them, and thank you, Steve, for helping get this done. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Some thank-yous first, and then a heads-up. Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz, for your commitment to Way to Work and the kids and everybody else's involvement, and to staff overall. I mean, people have been working hard on the consolidated plan, on the budget, we've had some pretty tragic policing and fire incidents just in the last week, much less what you deal with all the time. Leadership is working on advocacy and legal issues, and all of us on the council have the things that we pay extra attention to in our districts and so on, but it's a lot of time and a lot of heart, and I really appreciate it from everyone. This weekend, I went to the, they finally went public with the results of the work that KU's art department and film department have been doing in terms of reclaiming the bottoms, recognizing people who lived in the bottoms at the time that Urban Renewals Kiwi Project came through in the 1960s. There was a, our first Friday Open House at Arts Connect that was literally standing room only, the fire department would've been horrified. It was packed. And what is there is photo collages on the wall with the pictures of the folks that were, that lived there and were interviewed, and their stories. There are maps, there are artifacts of things people had in their homes, a lot of people went to Topeka High, you know, the jackets from schools and things that people had. It'll be easier to see that when the whole crowd isn't there, and that exhibit will be open at Arts Connect, just check for the hours at Arts Connect, all the way through May thirty-first. And I really encourage everyone to go. Also, the film department at KU assisted in on that project and have produced a film that they are gonna continue adding stories and commentary to, called Reclaiming Home: Remembering the Topeka Bottoms. And so they'll have some clips of that going at Arts Connect, and watch for announcements of showing of that later. It will be coming back around. That film was debuted at Brownby Board, again, standing room only. Every chair in that big hall was full, plus people standing and sitting all the way around the borders. It was amazing how many folks were there, additional people talking about stories and different views of recollections there. There was also some conversation, which I have grasped at the way beginning and still support, about looking at ways to do an installation in the area where the bottoms was. So there was some conversation about that, I think people are gonna be talking about it at the bottoms reunion in October as well. But the idea of, that's where the Polquincy Reconstruction is going now, there's lots of room in making sure that we reserve a place to recognize the stories of that great community and people who were there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vadeeviakala.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to just touch real briefly on some highlights with the Three Shields Boxing Club. Four of the boxers participated in Kansas City Pal Boxing Event last weekend. And Coach John and all the other coaches had a wonderful evening along with the young boxers, because all four won their bouts. And so, a big round of congratulations to Tibbs, Joshua, Davide, and Peyton. And then, this coming Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we'll be traveling with eight boxers to the Ninetieth Kansas City Golden Gloves at Memorial Hall, their regional championships. And then the goal is hopefully, in June, if we can raise the money, to get to the Junior Olympics, USA Boxing, National Junior Olympics and Summer Festival in Las Vegas from June fourteenth to the twenty-first. But speaking about the boxing club and, you know, thinking about what Councilwoman Ortiz said about all of the suicides and the pain that is out there in community, across colors, across ages of young people. And my concern is that there's not enough out there, and not enough place where they can really talk about the depths of despair, or if they have trauma, if they have childhood trauma, or anything of that nature. You know, and I know this isn't something that the city takes up, but somehow, we should try to imagine what it would look like to have places, spaces, where kids can go and talk and meet and talk about the pain and the transitions, or the places where they are most wounded and have a safe place to talk. At the boxing club, we have become a boxing family. Much, many of the kids that belong to the club are from the urban core, and most of them are from very broken families. There are a lot of issues that these kids come into the boxing club with, but because of the commitment that the coaches are really focused on with working with the kids when they're going through difficult times, with us having our family events that we have every other month, where we get together, the boxing family, the parents, or whether they're in foster care, or whatever, and we watch movies, we break bread at the club, and the parents and the caretakers are getting to know each other, as well as the kids forming bonds. Does that mean that, you know, these kids go through all of their, you know, school time with no issues? No, because there's still a lot of issues that these kids have. But something is happening, and it cannot just be blamed on the family. And the times that we are going through, I think are going to be increasingly rough. And so we have to have someplace where our kids can get together, because there are things that they need to talk about, that they can't talk to parents about, or they can't talk to a sixty-three-year-old woman about, but they can talk to someone else about, a safe space where they can go. And if anybody has any idea, I know how committed Councilwoman Ortiz and her daughter are, I would be more than happy to come up with any ideas that we can help organizations to think of for safe space for these young people to be able to turn to. And so, you can feel, it's very palpable, that Councilman Miller cannot speak of it. It's very palpable, as I sit next to Councilwoman Ortiz. And we just gotta do something. Otherwise, I think we're gonna keep losing them. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I think comments that have been said this evening have been very heartfelt, and I believe that the community has a, has gotta look at this council in a different way than sometimes people look at a council, that we're just sitting here making policy and deciding who gets what money and who doesn't get what money, whether or not we're doing the things they think we should be doing, and the way they think that we should do them. But everybody on this council has a heart and a true commitment to this community. And it spans the population in age, employment, educational level, access to all kinds of things that sometimes we take for granted, but that's all part of this job, sitting on a council. And it's rare that, I think that the council shares its feelings, and I think it should be noted. So I thank the council for bringing up these topics, because they are the things that matter most to us, even though we talk about infrastructure and everything else. All it goes back to is how we serve this community, and so I appreciate the comments that were made tonight. I didn't get to speak to, to bring back the bottoms, because Councilwoman Hiller took all that air, and then I didn't, I was gonna bring up the boxing club too, because I'm close to it as well, and have a connection to it. But it is, it is something that people don't think of, that a council considers, but we give a lot of attention to the welfare of our community, beyond the fixing of potholes and putting in streetlights and all those other things, so I appreciate those comments this evening. And on that line, there's a couple of things I wanna remind people of, that we are elected to do these things on behalf of the community. But we are grateful for an awful lot of volunteers in our community who step forward and serve on committees and commissions, that address a lot of issues that we don't have the bandwidth to take care of all the time, so we count on those volunteers. And in that vein, I want to mention to the public that I still have one more appointment that I need to make for the Affordable Housing Task Force. And I would like some people who are interested in doing that, because that, again, that's a commitment to the community, getting better. If you're interested in serving, please contact my office. I also will have a opening to fill on the Civil Service Commission, which has been in place for a long time. It was in place when I became a police officer back in 1970. And it still serves a very important service to our community, to look at our candidates for fire and police. It's an important position, I've given it a lot of thought to the people I've placed on there. I think we have a balanced commission, but I have one more position to fill because of a vacancy that's coming up. And so again, if you're interested in serving our community, this gives you that opportunity as a citizen volunteer. And I wanna make this really clear, this is an important job. It's important for people to pay attention to the people who are wanting this job. And inform yourself about the candidates. Make sure you're registered to vote, and get out and vote. This election affects you and impacts your family and lives more than any other election. I know everybody likes to turn out for the national elections, but this is the one that makes a lot of decisions that you immediately are impacted by. So, take the time to get ready for this election. Register to vote, attend those candidate forums, talk to the candidates, inform yourself. I think it's very important for us to give this a high priority. And the highest priority, when I find off, sign off here now, is to wish my wife a happy birthday, because it's another birthday that I don't get to celebrate with her, because I'm here doing this job. But we'll find that time to celebrate. But happy birthday, Ronnie, we'll find some time together.
Birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
I wanna challenge all my council members here. Next meeting, I want everyone to have a youth organization to bring up and talk about, and ways they can connect to that organization, to get our youth involved, especially this summer, out there, you know, or any organization can join year-round, but that is available to open now, but something, especially like middle school, high school age, to get them out there, get them involved, and come with several, because I don't wanna hear, hey, I don't, someone stole mine, you know? But please, come in with something, so we can pass that information out to people, and not just the organization name, but who to contact, where to reach out to them at, because we have several great organizations out here that we all can probably name twenty right now, but I challenge everyone for the next meeting to come up with a youth organization that our youth can get involved in, to create the family that Councilwoman Vadeeviakala was talking about, that's your extended family that you can reach out to and be able to talk to. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. There is a need for two executive sessions this evening. If the city attorney will read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed thirty minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543-19B3. The open meeting will resume in the governing body chambers. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, City Manager Perez and any other staff he deems necessary.
Okay, heard the need for executive session. I need a motion, so that we can go into session. A motion to go into session by Councilwoman Vadeeviakala, Deputy Mayor second it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilwoman Ortiz noted. We will recess and start deliberations in about five minutes. Okay, we've completed our discussions in our first executive session. No action has been taken. We have a need for a second executive session, city attorney.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed forty-five minutes to give legal advice on a particular liability issue deemed privileged under the Attorney Client Privilege Act as allowed under KSA 7543-19B2. The open meeting will resume in the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, city attorney Stanley and other staff members as needed.
Okay. Need for a second executive session, motion to go into session. Councilwoman Hiller, seconded by Councilman Dobler, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Noted, we will recess immediately into executive session. Okay, we've concluded our discussions under our second executive session, no action has been taken, no further business comes before this body, the meeting is adjourned.